Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to beautiful downtown Grad Forks, the proud home of the University of North Dakota. This is the time and place for the Jobs Development Authority. We'll begin with roll call, please.
Weigel.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Mayor Pachinski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good, thanks. First item on the agenda, Mr. Hatcher. If you'd take that for us, please. Thank you, sir.
Thank you Chairman Weber and members of the Authority. For those of you who do not know me, my name's Kevin Hatcher. I'm the Business Development Officer at the Grand Forks CDC. We should have remotely also Mr. Jack Weigand here for the Red River Potatoes LLC. If either of you have any questions, feel free to let us know at the end. But right now, I think I'm just going to give a little bit of a background in regarding to this place loan request here. So just a little background, over a year ago, the EDC met with this California company, Mesa Verde, the parent company of Red River Potatoes LLC. They're a value-added agricultural company who's looking at North Dakota to establish their potato processing facility. Red River Potatoes LLC, what they will be doing for the process, they'll be purchasing cold potatoes, product that you can't be used for human streams. They'll be dehydrating it, grinding it down, and then making it into a pet food ingredient. Over the course of the year, the EDC worked with this company, and we recently purchased the, they recently purchased the old Western Palmer Ingredion Building over 2250 Mill Road. They're currently settling into their new business and working to commission the facility. Overall, project cost consists of the purchase of Ingredion assets, which includes the building and equipment, facility modifications, purchasing new equipment to support the manufacturing process of their product. The pay request is being made on behalf of the equipment purchased for their project. Red River Potatoes, they'll be purchasing dryers, presses, screens, and other essential equipment to make it a more efficient process for them. I do have an update. They actually have hired now six employees already, and they're planning to get another nine employees for a total of 15. So the pay zone details, overall project's cost is 4.1 million total. They received a 2.5 million loan at 4.5% interest from Bank of the Sierra for the equipment and operations noted. The pay subsidy requested is to buy down that loan interest rate from 4.5% to 1%, excuse me, 1%. And then the loan request to the Growth Fund Committee for pay subsidy would be $80,702. And what this will do, it will leverage that Bank of North Dakota's pay subsidy at the granted amount of $149,874. The loan-to-value ratio on the property is 100%, but secured through a corporate guarantee from Red River Potatoes LLC and parent company from Mesa Verde Trading Company, as well as personal guarantees from the principals of the company. Opening the floor to any questions, if there are any.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Hatcher. Let me go ahead and open a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on this matter, on item 2.1? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions from JDA members? Mr. Weigel? We have a motion for Mr. Weigel, and a second from Mrs. Osowski. We have an $80,000 loan, 100% loan-to-value. Hearing any, are there any further questions or comments? Hearing done, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Hatcher.
Thank you.
Item 2.2, Accelerate Loan Request, True Weather Solutions, Inc. Mr. Lund.
Chairman Weber.
Good evening.
Mayor Pachinski, members of the Authority. The project you have in front of you this evening is Accelerate Loan Request from True Weather Solutions. Before we get into that, I'd like to back up and provide a little bit of background and context for the program. The Accelerate Program, this was inspired by the state's North Dakota's Innovation Technology Lift Fund, or LIFT, and two local startups. The LIFT program is designed to support early-stage companies, commercialized technology, with the goal of diversifying the state's economy. They use a debt instrument that is with deferred payments, so it acts like equity for a period of time where the company is commercializing that technology and at the critical stage of development of that company. The LIFT invests in companies in North Dakota, so they invest and do the activity in North Dakota. The Accelerate Program is designed to do that for the Grand Forks region, and we have a technology-focused. LIFT is a little bit sector-agnostic. Our Accelerate Program is focused on expanding the tech sector in our region. That program was approved, and I've lost track of the dates, but a while ago. We established a $250,000 cap for our program, and I know later on in this agenda, we'll talk a little bit about the Accelerate Program. As I mentioned, it was pressed for four years from True Weather Solutions. They're a weather data and analytics company focused on supporting US or the drone industry. I'm joined virtually, I believe, by Don Burchoff, the CEO. I don't know that I see him, but I do see, he's on perfect, and Howard Lunin, their CFO. I'll provide a quick overview of the request, try to quickly summarize Don's 20-minute presentation at the Growth Fund Committee recently. The division, pardon me, the vision of True Weather Solutions is that Grand Forks will become a weather drone operations center for North America. True Weather collects micro-weather modeling, forecasting, and guidance data, and translates that into actionable countermeasures for drone operators. The precision of their technology increases safety, but allows for greater operations. Putting in layman's terms, the precision of the refined images quickly identifies areas that are okay and areas that need to avoid, rather than a large area of concern where you say, "Don't fly." So that's the precision of the technology that is really the difference-maker. True Weather Solutions has established a presence and a strong business relationship at Grand Sky. Grand Sky intends to replace their existing weather system and use True Weather's technology for their weathercasting, modeling, and their go decisions. The company has 21 FTEs company-wide. At Grand Sky, they have one and a half employees today. They have a goal of five employees by the end of 2023, and nine by the end of 2024. The total investment in their technology company-wide has been over $4 million. This Grand Forks project is a $480,000 project, $130,000 equity from the company, $250,000 LIFT loan from the state of North Dakota, and this $100,000 request, they are not seeking the maximum, they are seeking a $100,000 loan from the Accelerate Program in Grand Forks. The terms mirror, to some extent, the LIFT program, in that it'll be, it's a 16-month term, no payments and no interest for years one through five, 2% interest, no payments in years four through five, or, excuse me, one through three, 2% interest years four and five, and a blue payment after five years. We do deviate from the LIFT program in that we do have collateral. The LIFT program has none, and we asked for a blanket UCC on assets of the company, and that has been agreed to. In terms of due diligence, because we are a primary funder of this and not a pay loan like the one you just heard, so we'd take a little different dive in due diligence. First of all, we do a background check. Mr. Burchoff was online, did a background check as a primary owner, that came up completely clean with no concerns. We also do organization, and we want to take a look at the company and their technology and the relevance of that. So we've had communication with three separate companies. So Grand Sky, I mentioned, have a letter from them indicating that it's their intent to replace their existing system with True Weather technology, and you understand the assets that are under their care at Grand Sky. We did receive communication from a company called Brazillinx, and they have developed the Army's ground-based sensor and avoid system. And I'll just read that they are partners on several NASA small-business innovation research projects, including development and commercialization of the weather sensor data monitoring service in the Hampton, Virginia metro area. And we also contacted a company, ATA, which is an integrator of risk management software. And they have purchased True Weather's Software-as-a-Service products and are integrating them into their Virginia Flight Information Exchange and Keystone Flight Information Exchange. And you put those together, they create a common operating picture of drone operations for local and state governments to operate safely in public safety. I guess the basis of that due diligence is to say that their technology has been accepted and is being purchased by industry. There's a lot more that could be said, and those who are at the Growth Fund Committee meeting, Don can sure talk about the company, and he's, I'm sure, open for questions, as is Mr. Lunin, as am I, but I'm happy to, that's the end of my presentation, I'm happy to answer questions, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Lund. Essentially, this is a UAS-supporting industry. My understanding was 30% of flights that are canceled for weather didn't need to be canceled, because our current weather forecasting is over such a broad area, especially with UAS, they're able to get down to micro-weather forecasting even around buildings, they can get that specific. And they're choosing Grand Forks as their base here because of the work of yourself and others in developing UAS in this region.
The infrastructure that, Mr. Chairman, the infrastructure that's been developed in the area, and this is, I guess, putting words in their mouth, a natural place for them to be, to create this center for drone operations with respect to weather.
Very good. Let me go ahead and open this for a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to this matter? Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing. Looking for questions from JDA members. Mr. President Sandy.
I have a question.
Please.
I'm trying to understand what the business model is. What I don't understand, I mean, I'm all for supporting businesses with startup loans and things like this. How are they going to generate revenue so that they can pay us back?
I'm going to have Mr. Burchoff respond to that, through the sale of their product to companies like Grand Sky and other companies that I mentioned. Mr. Burchoff?
Yeah, no, thank you very much, and thank you everybody for having us today. And so it's a good question. The way we generate revenue is by sales of data, so we call it Software-as-a-Service. Every time a customer uses our data and accesses our data, they have to pay a small fee for that. And that adds up over time. So we sell our average package for about $900 a month for a user to use our data, because it is premium data. And so that's how we get reimbursed, and we have so far, we've increased our revenue four times since last year. We've gone from $400,000 to $2 million in revenue. And our recurring revenue, which is generated by our customers needing weather information or even talking to a meteorologist, is already booked at over $1 million next year, and again, just rising rapidly, because this is such an important requirement for drone operations in order to get full use of their aircraft and generate revenue. So that's how it is, it's through SaaS, Software-as-a-Service, recurring revenue, and through forecasted-as-a-service meteorologists, talking to end-users and decision-makers.
Great, thanks. I'll move approval.
Thank you.
Motion from President Sandy, a second from Mr. Weigel. Any further questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Very good, thanks, thanks, Mr. Lund. And thank you, Mr. Burchoff and Mr. Vander. Next item on the agenda, Ms. Richards, Startup and Accelerate Loan Program Updates.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. As Mr. Lund just explained how the Accelerate Loan Program works, this item is to cover both of our so-called high-risk loan programs, which include Accelerate as well as Startup Grand Forks. At Growth Fund Committee last month, we, as your staff report shows, kind of did a quick overview of what those programs are meant to do. As I said, Mr. Lund just kind of outlined Accelerate. Startup is oriented more towards a small-business entrepreneurial startup, as opposed to a larger tech startup, but both are considered high-risk portfolios in that these are new businesses and riskier ventures than, for instance, our typical pace or flex-paced loans that have bank participation. The Startup Program has been around since about 2017, and your staff report has a list of the borrowers of the 16 loans that we have funded. We've had two that have been basically written off. Another one that we expect will be in default shortly, so our, you know, depending on when you measure, our default rate is in that 12% to 18% rate. So not great, but for a high-risk portfolio, not bad at all. In terms of Accelerate, you know, that's only a little over a year old, and payment is deferred five years, so everybody's current. Our default rate is perfect right now. But the reason we're providing this update is we have kind of hit a cap in terms of the funding. At approval of Accelerate, we were looking at, well, let me back up a little bit. With the Startup Program, we were looking at a cap of $100,000 in loans a year. We have not come anywhere near close to that this year, but when you combine the Startup expenditures with the Accelerate and the Pre-Accelerate loan programs, we are right about at that $2 million cap that was established as kind of a goal to grow into in our high-risk portfolio over time. That being said, the reason for this update is kind of twofold. We need to look at both the program parameters, kind of in the micro, as well as a little bit of a macro review of what are the goals of the Growth Fund in terms of both these high-risk programs and our larger approach to low-risk loans. Do we want to target those a little more carefully? Do we want to shorten our deferral period? Because as Ms. Stor said, we'll point out, this money goes out the door pretty quickly, but it revolves slowly. So we're basically asking for two things at this point. There were some Startup Loans requests that were in the pipeline, excuse me, with Brandon Baumbach, who left the EDC on the spring. Those companies are now ready to present, and so we asked the Growth Fund Committee, recognizing that we're approaching that cap, are you willing to hear from these companies that have kind of been lost in the shuffle, so to speak? Growth Fund Committee agreed that while there was no guarantee that they would approve them, they did want to hear their requests and then address the cap, you know, kind of at that one-cap-at-a-time basis. The bigger picture is, kind of as I was alluding to, let's look at these loan programs, changing cash flow for the JDA. What would that look like is kind of a long-term process. In terms of finance staff, they'd like to wait until they close the books at the end of the year to really look at where we are in terms of, you know, what is our portfolio, what is our available cash, but also kind of a bigger approach to, for the many changes that we've seen, both in, you know, corporate center sale, we'll generate a lot of cash, but really reduce the rental revenue that we get, what, kind of as a body, what are we trying to do with our limited resources? So I guess my update tonight is just to let you know that that's kind of where we are. Certainly more to come. Growth Fund Committee this month will have this item on the agenda again, and we'll hear from, I believe we'll have two Startup Applications, and then we'll be back to you with more to come on the subject several months to come.
Very good. So this is information-only tonight.
Correct.
You're not asking for a vote, but you are seeking feedback and input from JDA members. Mr. Phelan, please.
I think Councilmember Osowski had a good comment, the Growth Fund is, you know, why do we bring it here now? And I think it was intended that way, that we set the, JDA set caps both on the Startup Grand Forks and the Accelerate Grand Forks, so that we would come back when we hit those caps, so that you could then take a look at the programs, whether it's Startup Program or whether it's Accelerate Grand Forks, to come back to, to say, where are we at financially, and do we want to modify? Do we want to continue? It was always intended that we would come back to you and have a further conversation, since both programs are relatively new and innovative, and we just didn't want to put them on autopilot, and we wanted to have a kind of a stopgap where we'd have to come back and have further conversations with you.
In terms of them being new, well, Startup has now been around for four, five years.
2017, this one launched.
Yes, and we've had a couple disappointments recently, but overall, for a high-risk loan program, very successful. In fact, part of the reason we're having this discussion now is because the combination of these two programs have been so successful. We wanted to find applicants to loan money for economic development. We have found some very high-quality applicants. But now it's time to have a discussion about the future, all the terms that you've mentioned. So what we're looking for tonight is maybe a brief conversation about what direction this should take, who might be involved, do we just want to kick this back to the Growth Fund Committee? Should this be discussed by a larger group or a more diverse group? For instance, I think that it makes a great deal of sense for the EDC to be directly represented in these discussions. The mayor directly involved in those discussions. So that is, I believe what you're looking for is some direction in terms of process, rather than direct debate over caps or deferral amounts.
Correct.
Deferral terms, yes.
I think city staff and EDC staff recognize that we need to kind of take the long view with this, and we need to tweak program parameters on a very individual basis, but also a little bit of strategic planning. Conditions have changed pretty rapidly with the Growth Fund in terms of the, you know, we have sold Cirrus Plant, we've sold the corporate centers, we don't own nearly as much real estate as we used to, and we, as we'll hear shortly, are creating a tech accelerator across the street. So it's probably time to look a little more closely at all of our loan programs and how they support the larger mission of the JDA.
On the other hand, I remember some years ago where we would frequently cancel Growth Fund Committee meetings and JDA meetings because there wasn't anything going on.
It was no business.
And now, because of all the success, there's often pressure to sometimes have multiple meetings in a month, and certainly, we generally cannot afford to miss a meeting. And coming up in just a couple of weeks, a few weeks, there is this matter of a couple Startup Loan requests that have been in the pipeline for maybe over a year, that have now kind of matured and are ready for consideration. I would hope that the JDA, which makes the final decisions, the Growth Fund Committee recommends to the JDA, that the JDA consider approving an allowance on the cap to at least consider those two Startup Loan applications that we anticipate at the end of this month. Is that correct?
The process I anticipate is Growth Fund Committee will hear those applications, and I think we're set for a quorum on September 26th. I'll shoot an email out to that effect here later tonight, probably, but...
So the intention is to bring those forward? You don't need any approval from the JDA to do that?
Correct. That's, they've agreed to hear the applications.
Yes.
At that point, then, a recommendation will be made whether a cap needs to be raised, because the committee feels that these applicants are worthy of further consideration or not.
Thanks for writing me in there, Ms. Richards. I was kind of getting ahead of myself there, so thanks, thanks for that.
Happy to.
Comments, questions, discussion about this report? Mr. Sandy, President Sandy, please.
Thank you. I think we've done a really good job of helping businesses get started in our community, I think, and I'm more than happy, like Growth Fund, to take into consideration the two Startup Loans that have already been in the process, and I think we should do that. I think we should take a really hard look at our Accelerate Program. I've obviously been supportive, and I even made the motion tonight to move that forward with that loan, but of course, we are essentially, although I'm not saying we're not listening and thinking and doing our diligence, we're mostly taking the word of the LIFT Committee on them vetting those companies. Again, I'm not saying we're not doing our diligence, and Mr. Lund isn't, but we don't, not one of us is a weather person, and we're taking the weather guy's word for it, that his weather software makes sense, right? The LIFT Committee, actually, they go out of their way to get people that are experts in the field of whatever, whatever that software or business. If we're going to consider this program, continue this program, I believe we should have someone either request to sit in on those meetings, because we should have more assurance, again, it's just my opinion, I'd love somebody to come in here and say, "Here's what happened at the LIFT Committee meeting." Those meetings aren't readily available to the public, but they are technically, it's public money, so I would think that Department of Commerce wouldn't have a problem if we hadn't somebody there making sure that, you know, and not necessarily all the presentations going to be coming here, but we've created a system where people are going to Bismarck first, then they're coming to Grand Forks. We're seeing it over and over and over again, which is great, we're getting those businesses to come here, it is doing its job, but I also, you know, just for peace of mind, I'd like to know that the people they're bringing in to vet this out, who are supposed to be the experts, are actually doing their jobs. I'm not saying they're not, I just, I'd feel really good about it, knowing that they are, and if we had somebody there in case we had questions to ask questions. I don't, again, that's a question for the Department of Commerce.
And we've asked the EDC to take on more of the role in terms of doing due diligence on our end. Mr. Lund, any comments about this, attending those LIFT meetings? Is this a possibility? Is this already being done?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Sandy, it's not a certainty that, I'll respond in a couple of different ways, it's not a certainty that a LIFT applicant or a wardy will approach the Growth Fund, and there have been those that have not, so I'm not sure that I would put on my calendar attend every LIFT presentation, so that might be a challenge, logistically speaking. Although we have had conversations, I have had conversations both with the Department of Commerce and the Bank of North Dakota, and I sense that the Bank of North Dakota will play a larger role in due diligence at the state, and they have agreed to share the due diligence that they have conducted with the companies with us. That conversation happened, I want to say, in May or June, so a few months have transpired since that time, so we'll follow up on that, obviously, in conjunction with the work and the conversation with the Growth Fund Committee, but it would be my hope and expectation that that due diligence that you're referring to, Mr. Sandy, would be shared with the Growth Fund Committee and the JDA members, for those who would like to view it.
Ms. Weber? President Sandy, please.
I'm not even remotely questioning the capabilities of the State Bank of North Dakota, but I don't know, I believe that they'll do their due diligence related to the financial terms of whatever is happening, but if someone has a software system related to unmanned aircraft, I don't know how great the Bank of North Dakota is going to be at vetting whether their actual, they might have a great spreadsheet that shows a return on investment.
Right.
I'd like somebody to say their actual idea is not horrible. That's what I'm hoping we could hear, so, and I would assume that if, looking at the agendas for those meetings, anyone related to unmanned aircraft is coming here next, pretty much, so I would think that you could, you could see that on their agendas. You certainly aren't expected to attend every meeting.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Sandy.
And do we, do we have, we have many local experts in these areas. Can we be consulting with them?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Right.
Also, one of the key things that I look at, and with respect to the one you just approved, talking to people who've actually spent their money and purchased, you know, the product or the service. I mean, from my standpoint, if people are spending their money or investing their capital and who have expertise in that industry, that's the probably biggest indicator from my standpoint.
Very good. In addition to this discussion, if I could shift a little bit, Chairman Weigel for the Growth Fund Committee, and Representative Osowski, Cavami, as members of the Growth Fund Committee, any suggestions, comments about ways for this discussion to move forward? This would be about the discussion we're currently having about these high-risk loan programs, the caps, the terms of deferral, all of that.
Okay. I guess I would like to see, you know, more goals with these programs and just more defined programs. I think I stated that at our last meeting. Although there are a lot of high-quality investments that were made, I think that there were also a lot of poor investments made. Food trucks do not bring in jobs, really very much revenue, so I do not know if that is where we should be giving out some of our money, because I don't know how a food truck helps grow our community that much, but I guess those are all the comments that I really have at this point.
Very good, thanks. Mr. Cavami, please.
Yeah, I think I, you know, based on the conversations we've had, I find it appropriate to discuss it at the Growth Fund meetings. I think that, you know, the talk has always been being agile and understanding that if the right opportunity presents itself, we need to be able to move with it, so, you know, keeping the soft cap, or the idea that it's a soft cap, and that if something presents, then we can work through it. I think that's the way I perceive moving forward. So I think as we look at our Growth Fund meeting this later this month, that might be a great opportunity to reaffirm that.
Chairman Weigel?
I would agree with what everybody said. I do think the Startup Loan Program is important in Grand Forks. I see it as helping the little guy or the small family business or the business that wants to get going. We see it all the time, where we have large companies coming and asking for hundreds of thousands of dollars from this body, but I do think it's important to have a small program too, for somebody that's looking to start up a business, no matter what that might be. And I think that's our job, to vet a little bit of that business at the JDA level, to say, "Hey, do we think this is going to be successful in Grand Forks? Is this the type of business that we want to provide funding to, or isn't it?" And take a vote and move on, so.
And so is it, are you happy to just have a discussion at the Growth Fund Committee?[481.01]
Centers, we don't own nearly as much real estate as we used to and we, as we'll hear shortly, are creating a tech accelerator across the street. So it's probably time to look a little more closely at all of our loan programs and how they support the larger mission of the JDA.
On the other hand, I remember some years ago where we would frequently cancel Growth Fund Committee meetings and JDA meetings because there wasn't anything going on.
There was no business.
And now, because of all the success, there's often pressure to sometimes have multiple meetings in a month. And certainly, we generally cannot afford to miss a meeting. And coming up in just a couple of weeks, a few weeks, there is this matter of a couple startup loan requests that have been in the pipeline for maybe over a year that have now kind of matured and are ready for consideration. I would hope that the JDA, which makes the final decisions, the Growth Fund Committee recommends to the JDA, that the JDA consider approving an allowance on the cap to at least consider those two startup loan applications that we anticipate at the end of this month. Is that correct?
The process I anticipate is Growth Fund Committee will hear those applications and I think we're set for a quorum on September 26th. I'll shoot an email out to that effect here later tonight probably, but...
So the intention is to bring those forward? You don't need any approval from the JDA to do that?
Correct. That's... They've agreed to hear the applications.
Yes.
At that point then, a recommendation will be made whether a cap needs to be raised because the committee feels that these applicants are worthy of further consideration or not.
Thanks for writing me in there, Ms. Richards. I was kind of getting ahead of myself there, so thanks. Thanks for that.
Happy to.
Comments, questions, discussion about this report? Mr. Sandy, President Sandy, please.
Thank you. I think we've done a really good job of helping businesses get started in our community. I think, and I'm more than happy, like Growth Fund, to take into consideration the two startup loans that have already been in the process, and I think we should do that. I think we should take a really hard look at our accelerate program. I've obviously been supportive and I even made the motion tonight to move that forward with that loan. But of course, we are essentially, although I'm not saying we're not listening and thinking and doing our diligence, we're mostly taking the word of the lift committee on them vetting those companies. Again, I'm not saying we're not doing our diligence and Mr. Lund isn't, but we don't... Not one of us is a weather person and we're taking the weather guy's word for that his weather software makes sense, right? The lift committee, actually, they go out of their way to get people that are experts in the field of whatever, whatever that software or business. If we're going to consider this program, continue this program, I believe we should have someone either request to sit in on those meetings. Because we're... We should have more assurance, again, it's just my opinion. I'd love somebody to come in here and say, here's what happened at the lift committee meeting. Those meetings aren't readily available to the public, but they are technically, it's public money, so I would think that Department of Commerce wouldn't have a problem if we hadn't somebody there making sure that, you know, and not necessarily are all the presentations going to be coming here. But we've created a system where people are going to Bismarck first, then they're coming to Grand Forks. We're seeing it over and over and over again, which is great. We're getting those businesses to come here. It is doing its job, but I also, you know, just for peace of mind, I'd like to know that the people they're bringing in to vet this out, who are supposed to be the experts, are actually doing their jobs. I'm not saying they're not. I just would... I'd feel really good about it knowing that they are and if we had somebody there in case we had questions to ask questions. I don't, again, that's a question for the Department of Commerce.
And we've asked the EDC to take on more of the role in terms of doing due diligence on our end. Mr. Lund, any comments about this, attending those lift meetings? Is this a possibility? Is this already being done?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Sandy, it's not a certainty that... I'll respond in a couple of different ways. It's not a certainty that a lift applicant or awardee will approach the Growth Fund, and there have been those that have not, so I'm not sure that I would put on my calendar attend every lift presentation. So that might be a challenge, logistically speaking. Although we have had conversations, I have had conversations both with the Department of Commerce and the Bank of North Dakota, and I sense that the Bank of North Dakota will play a larger role in due diligence at the state, and they have agreed to share the due diligence that they have conducted with the companies with us. That conversation happened, I want to say, in May or June, so a few months have transpired since that time. So we'll follow up on that, obviously, in conjunction with the work and the conversation with the Growth Fund Committee. But it would be my hope and expectation that that due diligence that you're referring to, Mr. Sandy, would be shared with the Growth Fund Committee and the JDA members for those who would like to view it.
Ms. Weber? President Sandy, please.
I'm not even remotely questioning the capabilities of the State Bank of North Dakota, but I don't know... I believe that they'll do their due diligence related to the financial terms of whatever is happening. But if someone has a software system related to unmanned aircraft, I don't know how great the Bank of North Dakota is going to be at vetting whether their actual... They might have a great spreadsheet that shows a return on investment.
Right.
I'd like somebody to say their actual idea is not horrible. That's what I'm hoping we could hear. So, and I would assume that if, looking at the agendas for those meetings, anyone related to unmanned aircraft is coming here next, pretty much. So I would think that you could see that on their agendas. You certainly aren't expected to attend every meeting.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Sandy.
And do we have... We have many local experts in these areas. Can we be consulting with them?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Also, one of the key things that I look at, and with respect to the one you just approved, talking to people who've actually spent their money and purchased, you know, the product or the service. I mean, from my standpoint, if people are spending their money or investing their capital and who have expertise in that industry, that's the probably biggest indicator from my standpoint.
Very good. In addition to this discussion, if I could shift a little bit, Chairman Weigel for the Growth Fund Committee and Representative Soski, Kavami, as members of the Growth Fund Committee, any suggestions, comments about ways for this discussion to move forward? This would be about the discussion we're currently having about these high-risk loan programs, the caps, the terms of deferral, all of that.
Okay. I guess I would like to see, you know, more goals with these programs and just more defined programs. I think I stated that at our last meeting. Although there are a lot of high-quality investments that were made, I think that there were also a lot of poor investments made. Food trucks do not bring in jobs, really very much revenue, so I do not know if that is where we should be giving out some of our money. Because I don't know how a food truck helps grow our community that much, but I guess those are all the comments that I really have at this point.
Very good. Thanks. Mr. Kavami, please.
Yeah, I think I, you know, based on the conversations we've had, I find it appropriate to discuss it at the Growth Fund meetings. I think that, you know, the talk has always been being agile and understanding that if the right opportunity presents itself, we need to be able to move with it. So, you know, keeping the soft cap or the idea that it's a soft cap and that if something presents, then we can work through it. I think that's the way I perceive moving forward. So I think as we look at our Growth Fund meeting this later this month, that might be a great opportunity to reaffirm that.
Chairman Weigel.
I would agree with what everybody said. I do think the startup loan program is important in Grand Forks. I see it as helping the little guy or the small family business or the business that wants to get going. We see it all the time where we have large companies coming and asking for hundreds of thousands of dollars from this body. But I do think it's important to have a small program too for somebody that's looking to start up a business, no matter what that might be. And I think that's our job, to vet a little bit of that business at the JDA level to say, hey, do we think this is going to be successful in Grand Forks? Is this the type of business that we want to provide funding to or isn't it? And take a vote and move on, so.
And so is it... Are you happy to just have a discussion at the Growth Fund Committee with the full committee then?
Absolutely.
And move it forward that way and bring your recommendation back for the JDA's consideration?
Correct.
Any further comments, discussion then?
Mr. Weber, maybe to avoid having the conversation twice, maybe yourself and Mayor Bochensky would join us for that, so we don't have to rehash everything out. We can get input from multiple different directions.
Sure, thanks. And I'd mentioned input from EDC. You're always at those meetings. Always welcome your... Yes, very good. Any further discussion then? If not, we'll move on to the next item, the tech accelerator update. Also information only at this point.
Correct. Whoops. There we go. This is a little exciting in that this is kind of the first public reveal of our branding of the Hive as an identifier, instead of just referring to this as the old Herald building. We've had some help with branding from AE2S, and for now, this is kind of our working title. We are going to be pursuing the options of, you know, naming rights for the building, but this is the official reveal of the Hive, the name, the logo, the whole works. And what I'm here for tonight and with my team here is to just kind of provide a quick overview of what's been happening over there over the years, introduce kind of our launch team that is working on getting this off the ground from the city. And then, you know, you can see the items listed there. I'll start with kind of a rundown of where we are with the actual building fit up and then hand off to my team members to take us down the line here. You all know me, team leader of this launch team as Community Development Director. We're looking at Andy. We're calling him the administrative lead. That will be working with the Advisory Board, kind of just general administrative matters associated with owning and operating something very different for us with the tech accelerator. Maggie Brockling, right here, she's a new hire as of June. She has worked at Evolve and she's going to be our operational lead on this. Colin Hanson, who you have seen many times working on the C-Run program, he's very capable and he will be lending support kind of across all areas. And then, while she's not on my team, I'm happy to welcome her from HR with the group. Haley Rosson, who's been working with UND and grad school on upskilling curriculum for quite some time. So, in terms of the building, you may recall, well, the older members of the group will recall that we received a grant from EDA of 1.08 million. In January, we opened bids on the fit up of the conversion of it from an empty office building into a tech accelerator. Construction started in March. We are, like almost everyone else in construction, dealing with delays and supply chain issues, so we're expecting substantial completion in mid-November. Hopefully, early on that we would be looking at substantial completion about now, but in any case, November is looking pretty good. Our overall budget, in very round terms, when we started talking about this, was 3 million in total, with that 1.08 million as a cap from EDA. We have a construction budget was at about 2 million with 100,000 for construction contingency and then 900,000 for the non-EDA eligible items such as furnishings, security equipment, lots of, obviously, a tech accelerator. There's going to be some pretty high-quality video capability, high-speed internet, what have you. So overall, we're pretty close to that $3 million budget, very good on the construction end. As you may recall, we had very good bids and were able to not really expand the scope, but do a little better than we had originally thought we could with that first bid in terms of improving some of the amenities in the space, upgrading some of the kind of basic infrastructure, plumbing and heating systems. So looking really good on the construction end, a little over budget on the non-construction, but I'm pretty happy that, considering that we had a $3 million budget, that was a pretty good guess considering where we are today. So now I'm going to turn it over to Andy to talk about how this thing will operate.
All right. So what we have sort of in mind, our general approach to how we want things to operate or we think they could succeed over at the Hive, would be with this body as the JDA being sort of the overarching final approval authority for the project, but an advisory board, that's what we're referring to it as, and that's what you'll see, I believe, a week from today, you'll see the final ordinance for establishing an advisory board to sort of fill the role of the Growth Fund Committee in terms of recommending to this body various changes relative to the tech accelerator. I'll highlight that a little bit more on the next slide, but that's sort of, in a nutshell, what that entity would serve to do would be sort of to fill that, the Growth Fund's role relative to recommendations to this body. We've sort of been talking about this project, I guess, sort of as like a three-pronged approach, I guess, with a floating, fancy graphic there, floating forth for business development, but programming, facilities management, and then operations of the space itself are the main areas that we've sort of seen needing addressing, I guess, with this project. For the programming piece, we're looking at a partnership with the Center for Innovation. If you'll recall back to, again, I lose track of the dates as well, but originally with the build-to-scale component of this project, which is where this project started, Center for Innovation was going to provide the programming support and take the lead on that front. That might involve anything from hackathons to trainings to mentorship, all that kind of stuff. So Center for Innovation, we envision leading that front. On the operation side of things, things down to, you know, managing the rooms, reservations, keeping the lights on, that type of stuff, we're exploring a partnership with Evolve for that role. Conversations with both those entities are certainly very fluid and we're kind of figuring this out as we go, but that's sort of the two main roles that we see for programming and operations. And then, obviously, us as the city, the landlord, we would fill that role and sort of facilitate as well as staff the advisory board or at least bring the board together with, again, each of those sort of nodes, I guess, if you will, bringing their respective areas of expertise to the advisory board for feedback and direction, that sort of thing. Like I said, that floating fourth piece out there, we've kind of covered as business development in a very general sense, but we envision that being everything from sponsorships and keeping naming rights, that sort of stuff, to actually recruiting businesses to come as well as corporate partners and that sort of thing. So it's a very broad catch-all, which means it's going to require a very broad team to fill various roles, you know, all the entities I mentioned as well as well as the EDC. We envision folks playing sort of an all-hands-on-deck role and kind of collaborating to fill that role as best we can. The advisory board, like I mentioned, the final ordinance reading, I believe, is a week from today to establish an 11-member advisory board. Reason for going this route is, it seems, the more we learn about this, is that industry expertise is particularly valuable. As you were just alluding to, Mr. Sandy, is particularly valuable in this sort of sphere, this early-stage startup sphere, is having that expertise of folks that speak this language, I guess. So wanting to refine that a little bit and add all those different pieces on the board is sort of the impetus for that. And like I said, the role of the advisory board would be to make policy procedural programming sort of recommendations, guidance to staff, guidance to all those different partners that I listed, and just kind of, as well as provide assistance for both the startups, provide mentorship hopefully, drum up other forms of support, resources, financial or otherwise, to sort of just support and drive forward the mission of the accelerator. So that's the piece of the advisory board in the middle, and I'll kick it over to Maggie to walk through the other pieces.
Hello, Maggie, welcome.
Hey, thank you.
I'm excited that you're going to be the operations manager, is that right?
I'm excited to be part of it too.
Yes, great.
So this part shows the collaboration of the symphonic partners working together. We have Evolve, who will be working synergistically with the CFI as our, kind of our main headliners. Evolve will be, like Andy said earlier, making sure that people feel comfortable, that the space is clean and amenable to people's needs. Evolve, part of their mission is also to be champions of culture building for the ecosystem, so it seems like it fits very well within their niche and scope of work. In terms of the CFI, they will work on doing design sprints and hackathons so we can get people in the space and get them out, so that way they're able to take their businesses up and running and not spend a long time within that accelerator space. They'll also offer mentorship, and the CFI is really working on offering tailored programming to fit the needs of the constituents who will be part of the program, so that way we can set ourselves apart from all the other accelerators and incubators that are within the US and act as a recruitment opportunity for them. We have the EDC, which will act kind of as the recruitment arm for the Hive, and they're very well-versed in UAS and that network related to the tech and industries with that. And then also mentioned earlier, we're going to partner with UND's train and industry partners in the grad school to offer an upscaling program to make sure that we're also enriching our workforce within the community. And the pilot that we've offered right now, that I think Haley is offering, is going very well, which is positive, so we're excited about wrapping that in and offering that as part of our community. Next page. So this is, I like marketing branding.
Can I stop? Can I go back to something?
Oh, sure.
Co-marketing JDA loan programs. It seems that that has some overlap with an earlier discussion we were having.
Yes, so part of that strategic re-envisioning of the programs, I think that will be one of the items that comes up of seeing, does this match to offer, instead of like startup loans, to offer maybe a loan program specific to UAS programs? So that, I think that's going to be more of what the focus of that strategic planning is.
Thanks.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay. So this part I really like. I'm super excited about the branding and marketing. After several months of going back and forth with our vendor to devise a brand and a feel that we felt like would really encompass the facility, we've settled on the Hive, and it came about as an acronym first. So it stands for the Hybrid Innovation Venture Engine. So we have essentially this space within the building, which is called the Hive, and it will be buzzing with excitement and entertainment of businesses working together, mentorship, programming to get them up and out into the business economy. It's also a tip of the hat too, to what a group of drones is called. It's referred to as a swarm, so that's kind of a fun little moniker there. And we chose colors that were warm and inviting and kind of gender neutral, so that way they were inclusive, but they also kind of stood out and were poignant. So we've got in the logo what an image looks like. Oh, I didn't bring it up. The image that we showed earlier on the page looks like it's kind of like a bee with the hexagonal image, and then inside of the two sides, it has propellers. So it kind of has a drone and a bee look to it. And the website is currently under development, so we are, we're working on that. In terms of the lease and membership structure, so as you can see in the image, there's not much lockable, leasable space in terms of that. So in order to increase our revenue, we have devised a membership structure in addition to a lease structure. So the lease will be limited. It's different to generate revenue and defray some of the costs, but the membership one will be based on every person within the space. So that way, we can cover coffee expenses and, you know, just the day-to-day needs, supplies that people might need while they're in the space. Because if it were just based on leases alone, I think there's only five offices, so we might be in kind of a financial crunch. So that's why we've got a membership one, which is very affordable, and then we've got leases that are structured based on market rate. And then we have the option, which is very creative, to have an in-kind or contribution to help change the amount that you pay in terms of like your lease. So say, for instance, you're a mentor and you want to rent an office, you would have your market rate minus whatever you want to contribute at a discounted rate as a member. Hopefully that helps make sense. And then we have different statuses of lease rates to help be equitable. So corporate partners would predominantly have more money as opposed to, say, a startup like Fenworks, which would be just trying to get into the game and get some money. So we structured the leases to be equitable in that degree. And they're very similar in terms of like having the membership fee that Evolve and the CFI have. So at Evolve, previously, we did kind of a market capture of what membership rates were in the region, and we tried to place ours to be very fair in that regard, because we want, we want people to come to this space. And again, it says disclaimer, this is all subject to EDA approval, so nothing is finalized. All right, and I will turn this over to you.
Well, members of the JDA, some of the other efforts we've been working on so far include, well, I guess we're excited to pursue naming rights and sponsorship discussions, so we're looking at those processes now. We had a meeting this morning with Derek Hofer at the Alaris Center to kind of get a better idea of what this could look like for our space. The building that we're in is very different than the Alaris Center, so some of the metrics and some of those things are what we have to work on yet in terms of what a naming rights partnership would look like. But we have started that process. As far as recruitment goes, as Andy and Maggie have said, this is an all-hands-on-deck sort of situation. We're looking at those startups and founders to be members and participants in the space, as well as tech and UAS companies to be the mentors and resources, corporate partners, more established businesses to be located in the space and outside of the space, as well as those corporate sponsors we mentioned. So between the several entities we've got, folks within the city, we're looking to collectively reach as wide of a network as possible across all those organizations. This has been a phased approach for us. Like we said, it's all hands on deck, but it's largely city and mayor-led. As we look forward long-term to reach that full potential and set up the accelerator for success, that entity will eventually coordinate access to venture capital, provide strong programming for the entities that come to our region, and the city will be a key partner in the long-term for its success. And I'll let Ms. Richards finish off with a summary.
Well, here it is. You boil down a couple of years of really hard work and brainstorming, we've got four bullets. Construction, it's well underway, looking at, we hope, substantial completion in mid-November. We'll have an advisory board actually able to be recruited after Monday when the ordinance is presumably passed. That will be a major milestone to get that group convened and providing some input. Operational partners, you heard we're looking at partnering closely with Center for Innovation, Evolve, EDC, of course, and others to make this thing work on a day-to-day basis as well as really fulfill that mission of building the tech sector in Grand Forks. And then the lease membership structure, as the floor plan showed, it's a lot of amenity space, a lot of common area, very few rentable offices that are part of this EDA accelerator fit up. So we're getting creative to try to make sure that, while this will cost money to operate this accelerator, we want to make sure we're bringing it in in the most appropriate way we can from an operational point of view to offset those operating costs. And with a caveat, waiting to hear from EDA on what they think of our approach. So with that, certainly more to come, and once we can get the drywall dust settled down, we might want to have a walkthrough, because it's getting to be a pretty impressive space.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Richards. Fantastic team you've put together.
I think so.
I've worked pretty much with everyone on the team, some more than others. This is the first time that we're hearing a lot of these concepts, very exciting stuff. Essentially, kind of a, built on the foundation of a co-working space, but taken to the next generation or the next level. Will there be someone, kind of nine to five, who will be there as part of the operations? Is there a go-to person?
That's the plan, that we will have someone that will be kind of a jack or jill of all trades that is there just to make sure that the building functions for those who are operating within it. So there'll be, you know, a scheduling component, making sure that the coffee maker is working, a little bit of security. It is a public building, but we don't expect it... It is a public building, but we don't expect it open like a public library. And then there are lots of conference rooms, meeting rooms. We hope to have upskilling training on a regular basis, so there'll be some pretty heavy-duty scheduling and coordination that'll be required once this thing gets up and running.
And often, a space like this looks for long-term tenants. You're almost the exact opposite. You were hoping for lots of turnover.
Exactly. EDA expects us to basically kick people out after a couple, three years, because it's meant to accelerate them, and then they go out and spread their wings or spread their drones, and the next generation comes in.
Lots of fun puns here, that's great.
It's terrible.
EDC is a more or less permanent resident, and the Herald continues to be a resident or a tenant of the building.
Correct.
And we anticipate that those spaces will continue in that vein, but...
Well, they're outside the realm of EDA control in terms of lease terms.
I see.
EDA's requirements apply only to the spaces that they have applied funding to the fit-up. So EDC's lease is up next year, and we will be arm-wrestling in a friendly manner to make sure that that is renewed, but it won't be under EDA's purview.
Okay. We're not giving them the rush at this time.
No.
Okay, great, great. Because fantastic opportunities for synergy there as well.
Absolutely.
Other questions from JDA members?
I have a call.
Please, Ms. Lunskey.
So is it, is it basically like the 701 space, but just for UAS?
It's, it's more to accelerate a startup's rise to success. So it's not just a space, it's also training and mentoring, and that, there's a coworking element. You know how kind of good ideas tend to multiply if they're surrounded by other good ideas? So that's part of it, but it's certainly more than just a coworking space.
And it's all UAS-based?
Well, we're not limiting that. I mean, obviously, a UAS focus is kind of our claim to fame, and we want that to kind of be central to the accelerator mission, but we're not going to necessarily, and I don't know that we even have the luxury of excluding non-UAS tech firms from participation in the programming.
And is it on the first floor or second floor?
Both.
Oh, it is? Because was that on the, on the layout?
We only showed one floor on that example, but yes, it's going to operate on both floors.
And then you said your budget, you were short or you were over on construction costs. Where does that extra money come from?
Well, right now, we're kind of right there at $3 million. It's just a little out of whack in terms of proportions, but it's, yeah, it's ultimately, it's the JDA. Any cost overruns would come through the JDA for authorization.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Council Chair Weber, if I could say, on the second floor, if you don't know, one of the really great amenities on the second floor is the community boardroom that will be in the corner that, you know, faces Third Street, so I think that's going to be a really important element, not only for the city of Grand Forks, but the entire community. So I think that's a really good feature. There's also additional office space on the second floor also, as we move forward, along with some other amenities. So that is seen as a, kind of the key component of the, of the second-floor space.
Traditionally, when senators come to town, we've had them in here, we'd be able to host them over there instead, a much nicer space, right? How many people does that accommodate?
I think it'll accommodate between 30 and 40 people, so I think it'll be a nice showcase for the community, really show the Grand Forks in a really great light.
Any further, President Sandy, please.
Have we discussed the advisory board up to this point? I don't recall ever having a discussion about this advisory board.
Well, the ordinance to establish it goes through city council, so you have seen it as council president, not as a JDA member. I know.
When did we see this advisory board? We saw the Beacon Advisory Board. I don't recall seeing this advisory board come through.
There was a, as Ms. Larson or Ms. Richards had mentioned, there was an ordinance change to create this advisory board, where there were members of, gosh, there were non-voting members and voting members, if you recall, and it went through the Cow.
Yes, it did.
Two or three weeks ago within the city council.
Very good. Yep, okay. Then, and, and I thought there were too many members. Yes, that's correct, yes. Thank you very much.
And Council Chair Weber, I think on that, Council President Sandy may be, may be right on that, but I think when we're starting this up, it's all brand-new. We're trying to get as, be as inclusive possible with a working group, and then maybe over time, we narrow it down, but that was our, that was the sense.
Anything further? Very good. My screen has gone dead. Was this, no, we have one more item. The, just the report, the annual report. Ms. Richards.
And that is just receiving file item. Every year, per ordinance, growth in annual report is produced, and there's the 21 report is attached to your agenda.
Unless there are any further questions or comments?
Move adjourned.
We have a motion to adjourn, and a second motion for Mr. Weigle, second for Ms. Osowski, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks.
All right, everybody. Good evening. We'll call the Grand Forks City Council's Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order, Monday, September 12, 5:30. Under item one, call to order, 1.1, welcome to roll call.
Weigle?
Here.
Osowski?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Nunskey?
Here.
Kabami?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
And Bean?
Here.
Of course.
Great. Under item two, discussion items, 2.1, request for approval of a change in class of alcoholic beverage license from class one to class three. Wine for Libre Associates nightclub located at 3450 Gateway Drive.
President Sandy, members of city council, good news on this item. We can pull it from the agenda. Just during the JDA meeting, I received an email from Mr. Ma with Libre, and he and Mr. Blackman have come up with a new plan, so he is going to go through with the purchase of that, the transfer of that liquor license, so.
Great, so no action necessary. Thank you, okay. Thank you very much. Item 2.2, application for class three alcoholic beverage license for Laksmi Corral DBA Mount Everest.
President Sandy, members of the city council, Mount Everest is a restaurant currently operating. They're operating in the location that was formerly Steers, just, just to the north of South Washington, or on South Washington, just to the north of 32nd Avenue South. As part of, as part of their business plan, they would like to add a beer and wine license just to have that available for their customers, and, and then also to be able to host private parties there. They've had a request for that, so.
Great. Any comments or questions? Mr. Weigle moves approval, second by Osowski. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.3, special event, Ramus Brewery Special 2022 UND Homecoming Beverage Launch. Simeone, good evening.
Good evening, Council President Sandy, members of the council. Wanted to bring this to you. This is a, if you recall, earlier this year, the Ramus Brewing Company had a tent for a reunion. Well, they would like to do this again, not, not for a reunion, but that day is going to be a huge UND homecoming event in Town Square, and they are also doing a launch with their new business that's upstairs, and they'd like to have permission to extend their business to that street. This has already gone through our approval process. In fact, I had a conversation with our contact at the police department, and they have no concerns.
Any comments or questions or thoughts? Mr. Weber moves approval, sir, second, second by Osowski. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.4, police department vehicles. Chief Mackey, good evening.
Good evening. President Sandy, members of the council, we ran into a little bit of a supply chain issue when dealing with our police vehicles. The staff report kind of shows the timeline. In November of '21, we ordered our 22 vehicles, and we're still waiting for those. Normally, they're here around April. We have found out if they're not going to be built before early November, we're not going to get those. About the same time we found that out, our dealer that we have the bid through Nelson Motors advised us on September 7th, that on September 9th, Ford would no longer be taking any additional orders for the 23-year models. That's well ahead of their normal schedule. Normally, we do our bidding process in November, order in January for the 23, so they put us in a bad position. We did commit, we can commit with the state bid. The specifications are the same as the bid that we normally do, so the vehicles would fit our needs. We're not sure at this point if we'd be able to get the hybrid vehicles we've been getting for the last couple of years, or if we would be getting gasoline-powered vehicles. At this point, we really will take whatever police vehicles we can get. They do tend to wear out pretty quickly. So we do have a commitment through Nelson Motors. We can order seven through the state bid for the 23 model year. We had to do that prior to bringing this to Cow, just because of the very short timeline that we were given. I understand the vehicle fund has enough cushion in there should our 22 and our 23 vehicles both come available, so financially, it's not going to put us in a bind, but it definitely did throw us for a little bit of a curve.
Questions for DT chief?
Moved.
Moved by Bean, second by Osowski. Any other comments, Mr. Weber?
No, no budget ramifications, really. It's, it's, right, thank you.
Great. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. 2.5, wastewater collections sewer flushing truck. Good evening.
Good evening. President Sandy, members of the council, here tonight was a very similar request to what the police department just made. Wastewater collections department is hoping to replace an aging sewer flushing truck. The current truck has high hours, it needs some significant repairs to the pumping system, and the original manufacturer of that truck has gone out of business, making parts hard to find, and when we can find them, they're very expensive. We think in the long run, it'll be beneficial for the city to just replace this vehicle rather than throwing money at something that's essentially obsolete. We did put funding in the 2023 budget for this purchase. We were hoping to purchase it in 2022 and then receive and pay for it next year. We bid the equipment two different times, once in July, once in August, and we received no bids either time. I reached out to some vendors. The reason we didn't get any bids is chassis manufacturers like International and Freightliner aren't providing pricing upfront. You essentially order the truck, when they produce it, they tell you what the price is going to be. Vendors were obviously scared to put a bid in on something when they didn't know what the final price was going to be. They don't want to take a loss. I was able to get one vendor to give us essentially a bid on estimated pricing, under the condition that if the price comes in significantly higher than the estimate, we wouldn't be obligated to purchase it. So what we are asking is for you to approve a purchase of a sewer flushing truck from Flexible Pipe Tool Company in the amount of $209,500. This purchase is contingent on the final price being within 15% of the estimate. Also approve any necessary budget amendments related to this purchase. And I will say that the 15%, I kind of just came off the top of my head, so if you have any input on that, it's totally up to you.
Thank you. Mr. Hanson, any questions about the flusher sewer pumper?
Move.
Plastic tube moved by Weigle, second by Osowski. Any other? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Item 2.6, project update, project 8540, state and federal funding summary info only. Mr. Krinko, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, and members of the committee. Can, just a quick sound check, can you guys hear me all right?
Yep, just fine.
Awesome. All right, well, we are getting to the fall, and typically around this time of year, we start seeing solicitations coming out from the North Dakota Department of Transportation on various state and federal funding opportunities. The staff report's an info-only item to kind of run over some of those various programs. We're going to start with the regional roads program. That is a program that is based around by the DOT and is used on the regional roads. Regional roads are typically Gateway Drive, Washington Street, Demos Avenue, 32nd Avenue South, those major roadways that are, that are either US highways, state highways, or business highways. Typically, these are for rehabilitation, reconstruction projects, and our city share on a project like this is anywhere from 0% to 10%. 0% is on a primary regional roadway like US 2, and then our 10% share would be something like on Washington Street or 32nd Avenue or Demos. The next program is the urban roads program. This is the program that we end up using on our classified streets that are not state highways, and this is going to be like our Columbia Road reconstruction project that we've been working on all the by UND. We typically get about $2.7 million a year, kind of, you think of it like a checking account, that we can use towards projects on those classified roadway systems. Typically, our share on that is, even though it's an 80/20 split on funding for those, our typical project costs on that one is typically closer to a 30% or 40% city cost for the total project. The next program is the urban grant program. That is the Governor's Main Street Initiative. These are projects that are geared more towards revitalizing downtown. This is going to be the same program we ended up using for reconstructing North Third Street last year and North Fourth Street this year. This is once again, an 80/20 split, but because of the additional costs and kind of some of the special things that are not necessarily covered, our costs tend to be more along that 30% to 60% of the total project costs. Next program is the highway safety improvement program. This is a program that is, as its name states, is geared towards safety improvements. This was a program that we ended up using on 32nd Avenue last year to realign those left turn lanes, to improve the safety along that corridor. Typically, there's about $6 million available throughout the state for this program, and because it is a safety program, it is, it has a better cost share on it, where it is either a 90/10 if it's on one of our classified roadway systems, if it's on a state highway, it ends up a 90% federal, 5% state, 5% city, or if it's on, say, US 2, it may even be 90% federal, 10% state.
Okay.
Pretty straightforward on that one. Next one is the rail highway safety improvement. This is a program that is geared more towards safety at railroad crossings. This is for installation of new gates and arms and bells. We currently have a project programmed under this that hasn't quite started construction yet for a new set of signals and gate arms located at the Millsboro and University Avenue. That is once again similar to the safety program, is a 90/10 split, and our typical share on something like that is typically between 10% and 20% of the overall project costs. Next program up is the transportation alternatives. This program has had a number of different names in the past, including transportation enhancements, transportation alternatives program, the TAP program, safe routes to school. This is an 80/20 split program, and the split is unique on this one because it is for construction costs only. So any engineering, whether it's design or construction, is picked up 100% by the city. In the past, this program has had a maximum federal contribution of $290,000. You recently saw an application come through city council probably about a month or so ago regarding an application for this program. At that point in time, that newest solicitation, they actually removed that $290,000 cap, and so that, that program has become a lot more interesting because of that. The next program up is the special road fund. This is a program that is geared towards construction and maintenance of access roads in, within recreational areas. We've used this a couple of times in the past to help reconstruct Euclid Avenue and Lincoln Drive and the Lincoln Drive Park area. There's a maximum state share on this project of $300,000 per project, and it's a, it's a 60% state, 40% local for the eligible costs on this one. This program is a little bit more interesting, too, because the, the local municipality, the city, would have to upfront 100% of the costs and then go for reimbursement after the project is completed. Overall, because it's a 60/40 split, city share on a project like this tends to fall into that 45% to 60% range. Next program up is the recreational trails program. This is a program we haven't typically gone for in the past, and that's because... This is a program we haven't typically gone for in the past, and that's because this is a program that is geared more towards those recreational trails, and it requires that the project be shovel-ready and has a very, very short completion time in order to be eligible. There's a maximum federal share on this one of $250,000, which is another reason why we haven't typically gone for it, because it doesn't necessarily balance out with the costs of doing it locally. City costs on this one would be in that 35% to 60% range. One of the last programs is the rebuilding America infrastructure with sustainability and equity. This is another one of those programs that's gone over a number of different changes in the past. Most recently, this was the build program, and prior to that, it was a tiger program. This one includes a fair amount of money available for very large-scale projects. At one point in time, we ended up applying for tiger grant funding for the 42nd Street Underpass project. We were not awarded the funding for that one, but it is a very, very intensive program. Typically on that, even though you can get up to 80% federal funding on it, typically you're going to be seeing more along that 40% to 60% federal funding on a lot of the projects that are chosen for that one. This is a competitive grant program, and it is nationwide. Other programs you folks have seen in the past included the PRISI program, the railroad cross elimination program, the reconnecting communities grant program. Those were all discussed during our discussion on the 42nd Street Underpass and working with BNSF and North Dakota Department of Transportation on applying for those programs. And then the other one is the safe streets and roads for all program, which was approved for applying for not too terribly long ago, and I did get a message from Stephanie with the MPO indicating that that application had been submitted earlier today. With that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have on the programs.
Thank you, Mr. Krinko. Any comments or questions regarding that update? Yes, Mr. Weber?
Rail safety. You mentioned university at the Millspur, so that will, you're looking to install arms there, is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Weber. We have a project program for that one. We're still working with BNSF and DOT rail division on that one as to when that will actually be constructed, but we do have that project programmed.
Very good. And I know at one time, there was public input being received for the situation, Millspur and Gateway. Any updates on that? Any interest in applying for funding for that?
If memory serves, I believe you're talking about the skewed intersection study, is that correct?
Yep, yep. Thanks.
I would have to look into that. I'm not 100% sure as to the details as to how that project finished up, but I could certainly look into that and get back to you.
And the underpass on Washington, I'm guessing that would not, these funds would not apply for that project?
If memory serves, the amount of funding you would require for that 32nd Street Underpass project?
No, I'm sorry, the Washington Underpass.
Oh, the Washington Underpass. I don't believe so on that one. I'd have to better check the requirements, but I believe that is geared more towards the railroad crossing safety, whereas the Washington Underpass is already a separated crossing, so that crossing has essentially been eliminated.
Very good. All right, thanks.
Other questions? Proceed and file. It's available, this presentation's available on the city's website for anyone that wants to reread it or anyone in the public's interested. Thank you, Mr. Krinko. Item 27, decision document, project 8465, regional traffic signal rehab. Mr. Krinko?
Thank you, President Sandy. This is kind of a follow-up on some of our regional discussions earlier. We have the regional traffic signal project, rehabilitation project, which is currently underway. We're working on a decision document, which is what is currently in front of you. An environmental document and a decision document are kind of the first steps in developing this project, where the consultant has gone through, they've looked at 20 different signals, evaluated some of the alternatives, and presented them both to the DOT and also to the city for a recommendation and looking for our opinion on our desired alternatives for each of these locations. Unfortunately, typically, you'll see either a no build and like one build or possibly two build alternatives. Because each intersection has been so different, they ended up selecting 20 different alternatives, and then each alternative has a sub-bullet or a sub-selection for either a no build, some kind of a rehabilitation, possibly a sandblasting, removal of the signal, or reconstruction. In our evaluation of the decision document, staff is kind of looking at one of three different alternatives. Either, actually, if you end up turning to the staff report, there's a table that I have in there, kind of summarizing all of these different alternatives into kind of the three that staff is recommending for city council's approval. We're looking at either do nothing, sandblasting and paint, or reconstruction, replace the signal, as the staff's recommendation for the decision document. The do nothings, even though we have three in here that we're recommending that we do nothing on, it's not that we don't want to do anything with these signals. These are signals that are at Washington and Second Avenue North, Washington and University Avenue, and Washington and Fifth Avenue North. The reason why we're looking at a do nothing alternative for these three signals in particular is because right now, the DOT has in the draft step, the state transportation improvement program, a reconstruction project along this section of North Washington, I believe in 2026. And so it doesn't make a whole lot of sense from staff's perspective to go and do a whole lot of work on these signals just to have a reconstruction project go through and probably need to shift or move these traffic signals. So it makes more sense to us to push the work on these signals out until that reconstruction project, instead of doing the work twice at these locations. The five intersections that were recommended for sandblasting and painting, these signals are relatively young by comparison. These signals in general range in age from 28 years old up to 50 years old. And the five that we're suggesting for sandblasting and painting include the Demos and 34th Street intersection, the Demos and northbound Columbia Road, Demos and 20th Street, Demos and Washington, and Demos and the central fire station, emergency signal. That's located right in front of a fire station or just east of the Demos and Washington intersection. And then the remaining signals, after looking at the costs of the rehabilitation option as well as the cost of the reconstruction option, we ended up seeing a lot of costs that were very, very close to being either very similar or just not being overly cost-effective or doing a rehabilitation option. The consultant did recommend, or I shouldn't say, the consultant, as they went through and evaluated these signals, they had a list of recommendations for work associated with rehabilitation. And in some cases, on the major rehabilitation, there were recommendations to replace, you know, two signals or one of the signal poles. And our thought is between the costs, age of the signal, and already replacing some of the poles there, it makes a lot more sense just to completely remove and replace the system and start off fresh primarily because of those costs, the age. And the consultants ended up also indicating that if you were to do a rehabilitation project, they couldn't guarantee how long those signal poles would likely last. And with that, staff is recommending that the alternatives that are selected for recommendation are alternatives 1.3, 2.3, 3.3, 4.1, 5.1, 6.1, 7.3, 8.3, 9.3, 10.3, 11.3, 12.3, 13.3, 14.3, 15.3, 16.2, 17.2, 18.3, 19.2, and 20.2.
So Mr. Krinko, 18.3 shows the sandblasting route as the X on the tabulation on page three. I think there's a typo in there. It's showing both recommended 18.3 and 18.2.
I would have to check that.
Because it definitely reads 18.3, but the X is under sandblast and paint, which would be 18.2.
No, that alternative is actually, there are...
Now I've got to read it again.
Yep, there are three alternatives.
Oh, remove the signal.
Yep. And staff has read as one of the signals that one of the alternatives was removing the signal. Staff is not recommending removing that signal at Demos and 20th. Our stance on that signal is that there is a shared use path on the north side of Demos. On the south side of Demos, there is not a pedestrian walkway, it's a frontage road, and that signal provides pretty much the only protected access for bicycles and pedestrians between Columbia and Washington, a mile-long section. So staff's recommendation is to sandblast and paint that one.
Thank you, Mr. Krinko. I stand corrected, my apologies. Any questions for Mr. Krinko? Mr. Veen, move's approval, is there a second? There's a second by Lunskey, sorry. I do have a quick question, Mr. Krinko. Is there any road construction that goes along with the replacements of any of these that are being replaced? For example, on Gateway Drive and North Columbia Road, if you're traveling west, there is no right turn lane at that intersection, and there desperately needs to be one. And so is part of this replacement going to include any right turn lanes, or is this simply replacing the signals?
This project is simply replacing the signals. There isn't any roadwork anticipated for that. However, I'll give you a little sneak peek preview at that intersection, because you said Columbia and Gateway, correct?
Correct.
I'll give you a little sneak peek. One of the HSIP program applications we're looking at for this year is doing some work at that location to realign the left turn lanes. And I'm not, because you're, are you talking the westbound and northbound right turn lane at that location?
Westbound to northbound, correct.
Okay. That, I think, where we don't have sufficient right of way in that area to add that right turn lane. There's a very, very tight right of way in there primarily because both on the northeast quadrant and the southeast quadrant of that intersection, you have cemeteries, and the right of way is very, very compact at that location.
Okay. It sounds like you've already been thinking about it. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Not a problem.
There's a motion and a second, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Krinko. Take the rest of the vote off. Item 2.8, create district and engineering agreement for city project 84 or 8541, 42, 43, and 45, districts 586, 355, 587, 766, sanitary, water main storm, paving, streetlights, Grand Valley First Edition. Mr. Lieberman, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. This is the next step in our development and build-out of the Grand Valley Development south of 62nd Avenue. You may remember previously, we, the council approved the creation of a district for the stormwater pond. This is the next step in building the underground utilities and the paving. The developer, Creary Real Estate, has requested this to be constructed and special assessed for eventual operations and maintenance by the city. The estimated construction cost for this work is $15.5 million. This is a very large development for Grand Forks, maybe the largest we've seen in a very long time. But this is partially due to the fact that this is the cost of breaking into new ground, into a new quarter section of land, a lot of trunk line infrastructure, classified roadway along 69th Avenue. A lot of expenses go with that. Now, that $15.5 million, there is a city cost share, actually, three different components of city cost share that would apply to that, totaling roughly $1.7 million. For the sanitary sewer, there are components that are very deep, just by the nature of trunk line infrastructure, and the city CIP cost share policy has provisions for city cost share when the depth of the pipe goes below 20 feet deep. So there are sections going down as low as 24, 25 feet deep that require different construction methods to accomplish that. We estimate that cost share to be $50,000, which would be paid for from Fund 5200, the sanitary sewer fund. Similarly, the water main, the city CIP cost share policy has provisions that when water main is upsized from eight-inch standard pipe to, say, 12-inch or larger, the city would pay the material cost difference between those, and the cost of materials is roughly double when you start to upsize from eight to 12-inch pipe. So that estimates city cost shares roughly $192,000 for that piece, which would be paid for from Fund 5300, the water fund. The third component of the city cost share is for the construction of 69th Avenue South. This is a classified roadway, and per our policy, the city cost share for new construction of an urban three-lane roadway without federal aid is 80% city cost share. So that is roughly $1.5 million. That is in the proposed 2023 budget requesting to come from Fund 4815. So tonight, staff is recommending creation of the four special assessment districts. Those maps are in the staff report. I believe I also have the ability to pull it up here if you want to go through those district maps. But staff is recommending creation of those districts, approval of the engineers' reports, and also the approval of a engineering task order with CPS to accomplish design and construction engineering services. CPS is very familiar, has been working with Creary Development on this development for quite a while, and we feel they're the most qualified to carry out the design and construction of this project. So with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Any questions related to the special assessment districts? Water sewer moved by Veen, is there a second? By anyone, second? Thank you, Mr. Weigl. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. 2.9, plans and specs, city project 8544, district 588, stormwater pond number one, also for Grand Valley First Edition. Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. We're building a pond, right?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
We're building a pond?
We are building a pond.
Great.
So we have reviewed the plans and specifications that CPS has put together for these. We find them acceptable. The estimated cost at this point is $3.42 million for that pond, which is beneath the engineer's report estimate. The city cost share corresponding to that is roughly $752,000, which is planned to be paid for from stormwater fund 5400. So with that, staff recommends approval of plans and specs and direction for engineering department to advertise for bid.
Mr. Lieberman, comments or questions? Building pond, move approval by Weigl, is there a second? By Veen, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 210, change order, project 8423-2022, storm sewer repairs. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you. This is our annual contract to repair stormwater, water main, sanitary sewer lines that are in need of repair, usually emergency repairs and some planned work. This change order is coming to council because it's above the engineer, city engineer's authority level, but we are requesting to increase the contract amount by $178,000 for planned work in the stormwater area. The original contract here was for roughly $273,000, encompassing water, sanitary, and storm. So this is a very large change order. We typically bring a request like this at the end of the year to kind of clean up the work that's been done, because a lot of this work is unknown as we go throughout the year, it just pops up. We're trying to get ahead of that curve this year and request the authority for all the projected work that we anticipate doing the rest of this year in advance of actually doing that work.
So we're anticipating significantly more repairs necessary, so we want to put the money aside so we can pay to get it done?
Absolutely.
Understood. Any, Mr. Weber?
Keep him repaired.
You bet, absolutely. Move approval by Weber, is there a second? By Veen, thank you, sir. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. 211, engineering amendment number one for city projects 8407, 8, 9, 10, districts 582, 353, 583, sanitary, water main, storm, paving, streetlights for TK Industrial Park Development. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you, President Sandy. This is for the TK Industrial Park construction of utilities. This construction is nearly... This construction is nearly complete. We have a requirement to add some additional man hours onto the construction inspection task order with W I D C F. Construction just encounters different issues throughout the course of construction, and the actual construction period went a few weeks longer than we anticipated it would. So we're requesting to increase that amount by twenty-six thousand three hundred dollars. Overall, the engineering services for this contract to include design is only about five percent of the actual construction cost. We feel this is this is very appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Mr. Weber moves approval, is there a second? By Weigl, thank you. Any comments, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Item two twelve, engineering amendment number two for project eighty-two, thirty-one. Upgrade lift station number twelve and thirteen. Ms. Silverston, good evening.
Good evening, members of the council. This amendment is number two with W F W Engineering. We ran into a number of issues through the construction of this project, the first being COVID supply issues. That took more time for our W F W to incorporate those and review such materials and supplies. We also ran into issues with our quoting contractor and issues with the coatings adhering and having to take them off, staffing issues with his company. And he was assessed liquidated damages that we collected. And then there were a number of claims that were submitted through another contractor that we had to request additional information from W F W to help process those claims. So we're looking for additional dollars to pay them at ninety-eight thousand dollars for this second amendment with W F W Engineering.
Yikes. Any comments or questions? Any, any thoughts?
Move approval.
Moved by Weigl, second by Osowski. Great, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Silverston, item two thirteen, award bids twenty twenty-two dash seventeen. Street marking painting, Mrs. Litsch, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, council members. Public Works bid street paint for striping for twenty twenty-three budget. So we're bidding that now so we can make sure that we have it on time with the supply chain issues everybody's been talking about tonight. We received two bids, Sherwin-Williams for fifty-six thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars and one from Diamond Vogel for sixty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars. We are requesting that you award to Sherwin-Williams the low bid.
Thank you, yes, Mr. Weber?
Can you tell me about the paint that we're buying? Because we've used different paints on the road and some don't last at all and some last quite a while.
Right, we have updated our specifications. And in our specifications, we talk about dry time, we talk about the different qualities of the paint. And so we, the paint we spec'd this time, we've had really good luck with, lasting longer.
Okay, on North Fifth Street, you mentioned striping. Will this also include different markings on the road in addition to striping?
This would be for our white and yellow paint.
Okay. I'll be more specific. Along University Avenue, bike share rows, there's bike markings on the road.
Mm-hmm.
And those have lasted quite well through a couple winters now. On North Fifth Street, installed about about the same time, completely gone. Will those be replaced on North Fifth Street?
I can assume that, yes, they will be. I think the sign shop guys go assess what striping needs to be replaced and.
They're completely gone, so that we might have even forgotten that they were ever there, but.
I can make note of that and definitely.
Yeah.
Make sure that that gets completed.
And I'm guessing that the markings along University are this higher quality paint and this is what we're going with now, as far as we know?
Yes.
And council member Weber, I think on the North Fifth and University Avenue, those are both bid projects, so those are part of that street improvement project. So I think, I know North Fifth was a D O T project, it was part of that overlay project that we had it in, and obviously, they they did some striping on North Fifth. So I think Sharon and her team at the Streets Department will have to follow up. But just for the record, it was the contractor that did that as part of that project. But I think what you're saying is we probably need to get there sooner rather than later versus however we bid the University Avenue project with that contractor has lasted much longer than that that last one. So I think what we'll have is our engineering folks to go back, and I don't know if there was a difference in the paint so that, just to let them, let them know what those specifications are. Some is the last thing that happens on a project, and so we'll we'll follow up on that.
I'll move approval.
Moved by Weber, second by Lundsky. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item two fourteen, declaration of surplus equipment from the Streets Department. Has Ms. Litsch?
I was here previously at the last cow, I believe, or maybe the one before, asking for surplus equipment, and I missed two items on that surplus list to you guys. And so I am requesting to add two Chevrolet fifteen hundred half ton pickups to the surplus list that will go on Gov. Deals.
Any questions?
Both vehicles, sorry, both vehicles are not operational at this time.
Not operational. Going to get lots of money back for those babies. Moved by Weigl, second, second by Osowski. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item two fifteen, city council discussion items. Part eight, Red River Valley Bio Refinery Regulatory 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 update. Mr. Veen, good evening.
Council President Sandy, we, I had these added later this today, I guess. And I think going forward on the community hall, I'll add this as a city council discussion items. We'll probably add some just, but if you have items that you'd like to discuss at the community hall, really, this is your meeting as part of a working meeting. I'll keep that as a standing, standing agenda item. So if there are some things that come up, I will put the other, we shouldn't act act on anything, but this is really meant as an update. So to that end, council president Sandy is the leader, asked for two updates. And I'm going to partner up with Lisa Botman from our Water Works Department on A. And then Adam Joneson just got back here from a high school football game from his son. So he's going to do the part B. So thanks for being here, Adam. Nice, nice work. I did speak on Red River Bio Refinery Regulatory Update. I had an opportunity this afternoon to speak with Keshav Raval. He's kind of the, I'll call him the managing partner of the Red River Bio Refinery. Red River Bio Refinery was was constructed by, for lack of a better term, an investment group. Built that facility, it was meant to be innovative and new. It had some European technology and it was really, the innovative part was to take some of the byproduct of American Crystal Sugar off of the beet, the beet tailing, and then also some of the potato waste from companies like J R Simplot. And really to maximize, not only benefit J R Simplot and American Crystal Sugar, but also benefit this facility and not have to rely upon whatever the price of commodity would be like corn that you see. They started construction pre-pandemic and started up during the pandemic and weren't able to get some of their technical folks to Grand Forks. And so we had several issues. So under previous Mayor Brown and current Mayor Boczynski and under two different city attorneys, we drafted some emergency orders to keep them going. I think, all said and done, I think, as you look through this, that project is, had they had everybody from Poland or Czechoslovakia for, you know, from Tenbug Two, would it, would it have made a huge difference? Probably not, because I think there are some capital improvements that need to be made on that facility. I think the important part that you should know is Red River Bio Refinery is committed to making that facility right. That's why they, you know, they've stopped producing because they need to make some improvements. So they've hired consultants and are going to have to reinvest in that facility further. And I think a lot of that will center around that wastewater pretreatment system. So when we've had a lot of discussions about the Fu Fang USA project, we focus a lot on the wastewater pretreatment process, not only from a regulatory permit, but also making sure that it's robust enough and sized enough to treat what they wanted wanted to do. If you look back on the Red River Bio Refinery, and there's always a lot of finger pointing to do. And I even had a conversation with a Herald reporter and asked what, you know, how, how, how these projects are hard, right? But the point is, we live in a rich agricultural valley. We want to add value to products, and this is what we've done for decades here in Grand Forks with all the industries that we see coming through here. And certainly, it is challenging, and it's challenging on our infrastructure, challenging for us to interface with it, but it's all worthwhile because it it provides all the huge economy that we have in our community that we service. So we want to continue to do that. And but it is, it's more challenging than than hosting warehouses, right? But there is so much more value that we create by through these acre business. So I think, number one, they they talked about having to come back to city council. They're going to make some further investments. Keshav says that probably in the near term, over the next month or two, he would come back to city council and give an update on where they're at as a project. And I said, we'd welcome to see him again. I think secondarily, as part of working with their team, working with Lisa and Water Works on this industrial pretreatment agreement, they'd also would be interested in this time around, probably writ smaller, working on a development agreement. So that when they restart this plant, we can put a larger parameter around their startup and what they're trying to do here, and they would welcome that. And I think probably their investors would would welcome that. And there's probably nobody who wants to have this facility get up and going and and start making money and be within regulations are those that have invested in that facility, and they're committed to doing that. So I think when you come back, Keshav's in giving update. We're going to talk about this industrial pretreatment agreement. But within a broader term, I think we'll ask Mr. Gosdade to work with their team and organize it in a development agreement similar to what we did with Fu Fang, just much more narrow in focus with that. So with that, I've asked Lisa Botman, who runs our industrial pretreatment program, which is really incredibly important, and she's the interface with Red River Bio Refinery. And I've asked her as part of this update, kind of give you an update of what what she's been working on with the Red River Bio Refinery team.
Great, thank you, Mr. Veen. Ms. Botman, good evening, thanks for being here.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Veen. President Sandy and members of the committee. Just real briefly, we continue to work with Red River Bio Refinery, have frequent communications with them. Right now, as as Mr. Veen mentioned, they are not producing any product, but they are continuing to clean their facility and get it ready for winter, winter time here. So as we work through that process, we're continuing to work with them to make sure they're in compliance with any discharges that they may be releasing to the city. And that's kind of an ongoing process with their permitting and changing a little bit from a production industrial pretreatment permit to more of this process cleanup type of an industrial pretreatment permit. So we're just, we're working through that process with them right now. As Mr. Veen mentioned, also, we are interested and look forward to working with them and Mr. Gosdade's office on a development agreement. So when we go to this, hopefully, startup again, we'll have some more firm parameters in place. We won't have all this up and down, and we'll have a good plan, stepped plan forward on how that's going to work and how we're going to utilize all of our resources between the city and Red River Bio Refinery. And lastly, I just wanted to give you a brief update on some of the previous things that have gone on. They are continuing to work with the state of North Dakota to clean up their Stormwater Pond and some of the outer areas of their facility. They're working with the Division of Water Quality and the Division of Waste Management on getting that pond cleaned up and fully remediated. So they're working, still working through that process with the state of North Dakota as well.
Great, that's really good info. Any, anybody have any questions? I have a, I have a quick question, Ms. Botman.
Sure.
Perhaps you, perhaps you know the answer. There was an article in the Herald on August ninth related to illegal wastewater dumping into a gravel pit. And of course, Red River Valley Bio Refinery was hit with a forty thousand dollar fine. But the, and the paper indicated that there, the third party had no permit to do this dumping into a gravel pit. Do you know anything about that ongoing investigation?
I do know briefly about that. I don't want to speak for the state of North Dakota, but you're you are correct. They did have some illegal dumping occurring out in the county area. The state did provide the monetary fine and also cease and desist to those entities. There are probably three or four different companies that were hauling the waste for Red River Bio Refinery. And they, I think initially thought they were using it as a liquid feed, is what they called it. And upon further investigation, the state said, no, that's, that's not a liquid feed. It's, it's too salty and that sort of thing. So they, I think that investigation, at least for now, is complete. They've gone out and looked, and it doesn't look like there's any further remediation that needs to occur in that, in that dumping out that occurred in the county. But a little bit out of my purview, but that is what I know from what the state has done from that perspective.
Is this, do you know, is the state going to provide that official document to the city of Grand Forks, for example?
We could certainly request it through a public records request. They don't just provide that, you know, unless we ask. But we can certainly ask for that if you would like us to do that.
Well, I think it is, it's, I think it's important, this is a company that works within the city of Grand Forks, and there obviously are other companies that perhaps are Grand Forks companies, perhaps not. I'm interested to know, knowing the feedback we've been getting from people related to the corn mill and the concerns related to affluent being released into the English Cooley and or pollution into the air, I think it, I think we owe the public that information. People need to know if there are companies doing illegal dumping in our community. They should, people should know that.
Absolutely, and I can make that request on behalf of the city.
I'd appreciate that, thank you so much. Any other, any other thoughts or comments? Thank you, great, thank you so much for that, for that feedback. And then part B, city records retention policy update. Mr. Johnson, thank you so much for coming. I certainly, the information, although the staff report or the council agenda says there are no attachments, at the last minute, the records retention policy was added. So thank you for, very much for that. I appreciate you being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
And as Mr. Veen noted, I did make the request to have this on the agenda tonight. After Attorney General, the Attorney General's passing and the Herald reports on what happened to his email, I thought it'd be important to inform the general public of what our I T department does to make sure that we don't have similar issues.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. For email retention, what the city started doing in, it was about August of twenty nineteen, is archiving all sent and received email. So that's an offsite in the cloud archive that happens before email even gets to a sent box or an inbox. So for example, if President Sandy sent me an email, there'd be a record of that offsite in an, in an archive. If I replied to it, there'd be another record of that. I could delete my email in my inbox, he could delete the sent email in his. There's no record of it in either of our accounts. But when we go to fulfill a records request, it would come from the archive, not from the inbox or the sent box of those two users.
And that includes all blind copies, correct?
Correct.
Every email.
Attachments.
Thank you very much. So I can't even hide from any.
And and to be honest, I can't delete it as well. Two people have access to the archive. That's myself, the I T director, and Mike Lashkowitz, the assistant I T director. But there is no delete button for us as well. I would assume I could write a memo, send it to our archiving company, formally request that something be deleted, but there would be a complete audit and paper trail to follow, to follow that. So outside of just our normal email archiving and how we fulfill an open records request, when an open records request comes into the city, it usually gets funneled to myself. We fulfill that, we fill the criteria that's in that open records request. We send it to the city attorney's office for any redaction or any calculation of fees or anything that may go with it. And then the city attorney's office actually fulfills that from that point on. Besides email, we also do backup, since we've moved to Office Three Sixty-five for everything that we do data wise and email. So really, everything the city does, email and office related. When we do collaboration and teams and SharePoint, that's all occurring in the cloud. In order to protect that from being deleted, that's also backed up three times a day, so about every eight hours. Everything that's happening on the Office Three Sixty-five side is also being backed up. And there's a version or a snapshot taken every eight hours. So to, but that's kind of the nutshell, how we do it. Now, we do have other types of of data, of course. You know, there's utility records, finance records, H R. In those areas, we, we work with the department, and they usually manage and maintain a lot of their own retention at that point.
Any questions for Mr. Johansson? I have a, I have a question then. Have there been, knowing what happened to the Attorney General, have there been any open records requests for anyone that was a, a city employee or was a city council member in recent history?
We get open records requests, and it can be for a current employee. It could be. Uh, we get open records requests, uh, it can be for a current employee, it could be for a, a past employee, or we could do an open records request for a current employee and it would include a past employee. So anything in the archive, if we uh, if, if someone were to retire or, or, or term out, we would, we would still have all of their emails and be able to fulfill that open records request.
But specifically, other than my open records request regarding Jeannie Mock's email?
Yes.
Have there been any other open records requests made of past council members, specifically past council members or past employees? And have we been able to fulfill those open records requests?
Uh, yes, there, there have been others, not since, uh, since I worked with you. I mean, there have been occasions where, where someone has come in, but nothing in the, in the...
But the point is, we've been able to fulfill all of those open records requests. Very good.
As long as the email is from August, I think it's about twentieth of twenty nineteen on, uh, we can fulfill that.
Great. Any other questions for the good of the order? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you so much. Uh, moved by Weigle to adjourn, second by Weber. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.